Welcome to the Administrative Services Committee. Sorry for the delay. We got a longer-than-expected county board meeting. So, we've got commissioners coming, but we can dive right in just to get the ball rolling. Who's presenting for dot com? Okay. And if, do you have some?
Oh, I brought a handout, so.
Okay. We have a recording, so just give your, identify yourself with the record and let the games begin.
Right, I'm Derek Cruz. I'm the CIO at the Douglas Omaha Technology Commission, and I'm here to talk about something we've been working with Public Properties, Jerry and his team on over the last few months, just brainstorming about the future. So, I've got a small handout here that I'll.
Did you get one?
No.
Derek, if you could just sign in and then folks when you identify yourself with the record, please give your title and spell your name, make it easier on our transcribers. It's a little lesson I've learned in the legislature where for the last thirty years I've been testifying committees and I spelled my name.
So, again, Derek Cruz, D-E-R-E-K-K-R-U-S-E with dot com. And I'm here to talk a little bit about something we've been working on. Kevin Higgins, who's on the dot com team, works very closely with Public Properties. Obviously, we have a lot of synergies when we're talking about all the different projects we're doing out and about around the county. And with the discussions getting heated up about the Fitzgerald building and what's going to happen out there, we were thinking it might make sense to come forward and request a little sliver of space in that building to help support the different departments that are going to be there as well as the surrounding areas. So, provided just a very general map here, our friends at G.I.S. put this together for us. And it just, in simple terms, just to see it, our, you know, our main location on the right side of the page is downtown. That's where we house most of our team. And then we distribute, we have two vans and we send our techs out to do what they need to do. And we do house some people at specific locations like at the health center, campus, or on the city side at a library or something like that. But as we continue to see the expansion out west, as well as, you know, propose new O.P.G. precincts, we thought, why don't we come forward and request a couple of square feet out there to put, house our technicians that will help support the clients there, as well as maybe a small conference room for us to touch down and meet from time to time as we are out there quite a bit. And as we look at attracting and retaining employees from around the area, we're in competition with all the other firms and many of them are out west. It's another opportunity for us to say, hey, we also have a touchdown space on the west side of the county so that we can have people office there if that makes sense in the future. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. How many square feet are you talking?
Whatever you'll give us. I mean, that's what I'm here to request is I know that you've got a lot of different needs to meet and we'll take whatever we can get. I mean that sincerely. We're here just hat in hand to say, we'll, we want to provide the best support we can out there, so we'll take whatever we can get.
You've had conversations with Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
And we've had conversations with El Pavana, who's here today. And we do have an area that we kind of carved out. Derek hasn't seen this, but it's on the third floor. So, obviously, we know a garden for a second. There's a little piece up on the third floor that would be about eight fifty to nine hundred square feet. It would make a perfect tech area for your staff. So, that's kind of what we're thinking. We need the okay of the board to allow them to participate. And when Joe gets here, we'll work out the financing. But I think it's something we can do. It's part of the build-out, it's part of the shell, so to speak. Get into more particulars here with Derek, Kevin, and we'll be a little more precise. We have the space. It's not going to hurt anyone else that's already in there. It's not going to hurt anyone that wants to come out in the future. And Al may know a little bit more about the future, about the square foot expansion. Do we have that number yet roughly?
For the remaining floors?
Yes.
I think.
Oh, come on up.
I think we're, you know, we're talking at least twenty thousand square feet or that we're finishing on in that building. But I think we're talking about, on the third level, there's a unique spot there for office space that had offices before where the rest of it is storage. And if that's what Jerry's talking about.
Derek, have you had an opportunity to tour the facility?
I was out there once many years ago. And again, you know, our, our goal here is, you know, to provide the best service to the folks that are out there. And so, if it's, you know, thousands of square feet where we can, you know, put some folks and make sure we have a good tech presence out there, that's what we're looking for.
Joe? Joe's not here yet. Patrick, maybe you can help us just. Dot com is a separate entity.
Correct.
So, how would this work in terms of, would we presumably charge them rent?
Well, we do it as we do anywhere else. I mean, we have office space at the Goodwill Building and I don't believe you pay rent for that at the health centers. We just provide an office.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a, there's no rent that's required. But they will, my understanding is whatever minimal renovation cost from IP dot com is be willing to pay for, is that correct?
They'd like to have some space. We've been joined by Commissioner Morgan. I'd also like to recognize County Treasurer Ewing, County Clerk Comptroller Ash. We have various department heads and several others. And Joe, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're just talking about the prospect of dot com moving into part of the Fitzgerald Center and how that would work financially.
And I'm, I'm all for it. I don't think there's really any financial aspects to it, really. I mean, it's just a small office space on the third floor where we wouldn't really have anything else but storage. So, we just provide them space there and then they would be able to provide onsite tech support to those various departments that are going to be housed there. I think it's just a fantastic idea. I'm just kind of sorry I didn't think of it myself.
Who did think of it?
It was a joint effort, talking to Derek and Kevin, who's on the dot com. It was one of those ideas of setting this, and the map shows it, right? We're seeing more and more activity out west. It makes sense for us to have a presence out there.
Perfect. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we're excited about, you know, the facility and making it as multipurpose as possible, so it is a good idea. Devil's always in the details here, so maybe we could flush that out a little bit, take a tour with Public Property and would we have to execute some kind of a document to do?
No, no. No, we would just give them space. It's really, it's, it's actually as simple as, as we're portraying it to be. It really is.
Okay. It's just getting your permission to put another division in the, in the Fitzville. The PJs are going on the third floor. It's about nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet. It's a tech area for the staff. They don't serve in type campus and everything that's out west, which would include some other.
If it works and there's anyone that comes up with a reason we shouldn't do that, then we ought to be doing it.
I think so.
Now, somebody has a question.
Jerry, just curious, where on third?
You're on two.
You're on two, so it's above you.
Above you, it's in the middle.
Derek, Derek Trump's you guys. In many ways, but.
Let it go.
You know, we were always going to have a dot com sector of some sort out there, tech room, if you want to call it that. But this, this gives them more of a service presence for all of us. And just needed your permission. How many people, Derek, would you anticipate?
And from a tech perspective, we'd probably look at having one or two out there permanently, depending on how this all plays out, who's exactly out there and what kind of support is needed. And then we would look at potentially having people housed there, depending on the needs, right? As you can understand from a technology perspective, we have folks that are coding all day long, right? Doesn't matter if they're downtown or over there, what it might be. So, if it makes sense to house a few people out there just strategically from a human resources perspective, we might do that as well, depending on the foot.
Well, yeah, and that makes all kinds of sense. We also are going to have a lot of people in there that could use services from time to time, so, you know, maybe somebody that could be there to help with them.
Exactly. And that's the intent of this, to be clear, that one to two headcount would be there in support of anyone that's out at that facility and in the surrounding areas as well.
Well, maybe go out with Jerry and the Public Property people and meet with Al and the architecture people and by, what, a month from now, could we come back with something that's kind of sketchy? Well, I, I, we kind of have it. Oh, you do? I mean, not enough to hand out, but just, because I didn't know Derek's response to the space that we might get, but I think it's, sounds like it's.
My response is, thank you very much. We're very grateful for it, right? I mean, that's, that's exactly the kind of thing that we were talking about and, you know, we don't want to displace anyone else or put anything out like that. We just want to do the best we can to serve that campus. And what you're describing, Jerry, is ideal.
Is there anybody that's kind of opposed to this idea?
So, yeah, that's true.
That's a nice thing.
Yeah. So, is this eight or nine hundred square feet?
Yeah.
What's eleven hundred total?
Yeah. That includes, that includes a couple of restrooms.
There's two restrooms.
They'd have to be up there anyway.
Right. There's really about five cubicles, couple offices, and then a lab area for, to work on computers is what we're anticipating right now.
Well, Patrick, maybe you'll show this with the rest of the board and we'll see if we can move ahead on this sooner rather than later unless anybody has any other. I think we're going to keep moving because.
We know.
That's great. Thanks. Derek, I couldn't get my laptop to go online.
Let me take that for you.
Okay. We are moving along and we're kind of running a little bit later, so we'll press on. Space needs, I mean, this is space needs. I don't know if John Ewing has any update on his space progress.
No, we haven't had any more meetings and we believe everything's on track with the plan, so we're still sitting in great shape.
Okay. We have a quick bond update just on the progress that we're making. And, you know, we've kind of been cycling in people who are most affected stakeholders going to be moving in, moving out, whatever. And this month, we don't have anybody specifically under the bond thing, but I have had some preliminary discussions with Dr. Foxall about coming back to us sometime. I think, Mark, you said that you were prepared to start this summer, is that correct?
It appears that they'll be in the building on or about July 1st. And that first phase of the project should run probably to, through to the end of December. That's preliminary estimates, anyway. I hope sooner, I hope to start earlier before account got higher than it already is, but accounts are higher than it already should be now, so it's not going to make much difference.
So, if we were to schedule you in here, say, for our late August meeting, you'd have some progress underway by then, is that correct?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll shoot for that if that works for your schedule. In the meantime, Jerry, you want to just give us some? Well, let's go with both projects. Let's start with corrections. Because we're doing Phase One and we're well on our way, we're going to receive bids at May 3rd, next Wednesday. So, we will be awarding that contract sometime late May, early June. And then we have to get into the phasing with Mark on scheduling and Al, Jeff, if you could jump in at any time.
Right now, right now, we're scheduled that Mark thinks he can afford is giving up one mod per phase. So, if we can do two, we'll try to do two to speed up things, but his population is growing, so, and we'll have to dive into that, Mark. Do you think?
No, I'm saying with the, with the, one mod at a time, three weeks approximately per housing unit.
Three weeks.
And if we stay on that schedule, we should get through the annex in a fairly respectable time. But again, it all depends on what happens to the population. We hit thirteen ninety in August last year, which is really, with everything open and people on the floor in both gyms, it was, there was discussion as to where we, we're going to start to look for space. So, if we follow that pattern, we have to close one of the big annex housing units, which is where we typically house our minimum security people, then we're going to have to get creative about space. I think we can, there's a limit to how many people I'll put in on the floor in the gym and for how long, but there are some intermediate things we can do short of farming people outside of the facility. So, if I have to push down federal numbers, then that's, would be preferable to farming people out because that creates transportation issues with respect to getting them there, getting them back for court and releases, and I would just prefer not to do that. So, hopefully, we can, we can get creative in housing of people within the facility.
So, give me the thumbnail on what is in Phase One?
Phase One will involve the annex, which is the nineteen eighty-eight construction. It'll involve replacement of windows, upgrade lighting. It will also involve some fixtures, plumbing fixtures, plumbing lines, excuse me. It'll involve smokeheads, also fire suppression, I guess I should say, and. Skylights as well, yeah, because we talked about the gym as well.
And what's the dollar amount on Phase One?
We're hoping it's going to come in approximately. And the wild card is, you know, the, from a contractor's perspective, is being able only to get in at a certain date and at a certain time. That's, that's the wild card on any side.
All right. Good. So, we'll look for late August back from you. You should be in construction mode by then. We'll take it from there. We have any other bond issue related discussions at this point, Jerry? I don't, I mean, the west campus Fitzgerald property update is just, as you can see, if you've got some of these charts, we are in the process of winding down the abatement at Fitzgerald Home. That was the first contract we awarded. It will be into design, the finished designs is completed, contract documents being prepared, the construction will have to bid. When will design be completed, Jerry? In the. Design and construction, okay.
We want to bid at the end of May.
End of May. So, we're well on our way there. Big thing was getting Phase One. The corrections.
Jumpstart.
Jumpstart. So, does the A and E committee meet then again when, in the bid vote? No. And when we say design, Al, is there something that we can look at at that point when the design is complete and then we draw?
Well, we'll have a, obviously, big set drawings and specs. We're pretty much done with design. We're basically doing the technical documents, the bidding documents. So, we can, you know, we can, we're put, the design of the plans and scope of the work is really defined. And we met with all departments. We've incorporated all the mechanical, electrical, engineering input. We're, you know, we're just finishing up our drawings to go out to bid.
So, at any point, I've seen these architects do, where they do a virtual tour and put the building up there, we walk through it, is that going to be available to us?
We certainly can do whatever you would like to see as a presentation package.
Is that going to drive up costs if we do it that way?
If you want a full 3D virtual tour of every single room in there, I would say that's beyond the scope of the work. But I think we can, we can come up with the major spaces like the nine one one center and the treasurer's main space. I don't think it's going to be necessarily impressive to walk in every, you know, thirty-seven individual offices all look the same, it could get potentially difficult.
Maybe we can work on that. I bet that might be a good.
I think we're going to accommodate whatever.
We can have bigger sheets of something.
Well, yeah, right, we definitely can do colored plans, but I think you're talking about being able to visualize what you see when you're finished. And I think we can do some of that.
Great. We'll work some more on that and see where we put that in, maybe, you know, when we get past the, you know, the completing the documents and go out to bid, and that just gives us a good idea of how to look at that. So, is that going to be like the corrections component in phases or is that in the one long line that we see? There's two phases. I see the two construction phases, one is the specs and one is, I guess, the main.
The main.
Well, if you flip to the correction one, there's two phases. I saw that on the correction, but we're on the Fitz now.
There's only one major phase. Yeah, the Fitz and the correction center are two completely different projects from a contractor's perspective. The Fitz is, is ready to go. The contractor, once you get a little, little better, you accept his bid, you're going, he's got full reign to go. There's no phasing within that construction contract. It's supposed to be the whole, the whole way through.
Okay. And at some point there, might be an opportunity, I know that we're not breaking a lot of ground, but, you know, you'd like to officially kick off the construction phase with some commemoration of the construction phase. We're not spending all this money so that we can hide it from the public. If we were at U N M C, they would have every media outlet within a hundred miles.
Well, I was going to say, we're going to be breaking a lot of ground. You've got about a hundred and thirty will.
Why don't you guys figure out what would be the appropriate time and place to do that and make sure that our public information officer has plenty of advance notice to get this good news out to the world? I don't know that it's practical to do it at the correction center, but. No. Okay. It's a party. We have one last item discussion regarding moving records image department under the Public Properties Department. Patrick?
Sure, so just quickly, county board as part of their strategic plan is to consider internal consolidation among county departments. And the start for me would be a low-hanging fruit in my mind would be to move, records and imaging used to be called Microphone Department, which is located on sea level and put that under the direction of Jerry Leahy and Jeff McGill and Public Properties for a couple of reasons. One, because they're the space gurus and my ultimate goal is to move them out of there. And number two, the only other department that I thought would make sense would be purchasing, and they already have the garage, the warehouse, the print shop, the mailroom. So, to me, it makes sense to put it under Public Properties and it's going to be no initial, I don't see any initial savings, but I think with the records, imaging director working with Public Properties perhaps in the future, there could be some efficiencies. But this is just, this is a start. I have other ideas for internal consolidation that, that's, that I will be bringing up in the future, in the near future, but just not today.
Okay. So, they have four FTEs down there?
Correct.
And they would come up to the Harney Street level?
They would, well, that's ultimately my goal, that not as part of this consolidation. You know, the consolidation is merely putting that department underneath Jerry Leahy.
Okay.
My goal is to get them physically out of there because it's sea level, there's water leaking problems, there's noise problems, odor problems because the parking garage is right above them, and there's a river that was, is located underneath this building. So, they have water problems from time to time. So, that's the ultimate goal. If it's Harney level or wherever it is, my ultimate goal is to move them out of there.
Okay. We've been joined by Commissioner Borgerson and you've discussed this, I think, with all the parties. We toured the facility down there. Everybody in the departments affected are on board. Jerry?
Yes.
And.
Jerry is here.
Come on up.
And nothing would change in any other regards, I don't see. It's just merely putting, putting her under, under that department.
Identify yourself for the records.
Terry Malphite, Records Imaging, and I, this, fine with me.
I like the way you think, Jerry. Very positive. And Jerry, Public Property is fine with this?
Yes.
Okay. What do we do next, Patrick?
I will just effectuate it. Unless, unless you think county board, full county board needs approval, I think I can do it administratively internally. It's really just more of a, just giving you the update, but I do intend to do it as soon as possible.
Good. I overlooked Commissioner Duda. I don't know how you got in without me seeing you, but.
I know. He's still sitting there.
Okay? Good?
Good.
All right. The only other thing we have is other business, and the only other business that is kind of ongoing is our nine one one. Director David, you want to come up for a second?
Sure.
You know, a big part of the Fitz home is going to be nine one one, and so we want to make sure that everything's going according to the plan there. It is.
I think it is, yeah. I've been working with Jerry and Jeff and the architect, and they've all been very good to work with. And so far, I think that we're on pace. As far as the radio communications equipment that was in the public safety bomb, just to let you know that it's been inventoried now and the mobiles and the portables for the law enforcement are being programmed at this time. They have to be programmed, of course, to be on a trunk radio system. And the infrastructure work that needs to be done preliminary to a lot of the major radio work is being scheduled now. Things like the microwave wings and the beginning of levels of the controllers and things like that.
You know, we've had people come and do their bit of the project and presentation. We thought maybe midsummer or late July or something might be a good time for you to get, give us an update of where we would be.
Sure, sure. We should have some more going by then.
Okay.
One other thing, on nine one one, we looked at the Motorola lease and heard there's two of them on the equipment, and they really only allow payoffs on the anniversary dates. And Motorola doesn't really want to give us any incentives to pay, pay early. So, the plan is we'll get the payoff letters from them and then effectuate payoffs in December and January, December seventeen and January eighteen, and then we'll have full ownership of that equipment.
Okay. I think there was some talk, that we were in other discussions with Motorola, is that regarding this or regarding larger equipment?
I know that there's an ongoing discussion with contracts, maintenance and software contracts.
That's still ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Anything else on that? Anybody else? Well, very good. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Jim, if I may, may I throw in thirty seconds more on the bond issue? Where I kind of dropped the ball myself, and I'm probably tilding at windmills at this point. The volunteer fire departments got left out of the paging system because of different needs that they have done Omaha, and so the decision was made, just too complicated, we'll just go with Omaha. And now the volunteers are coming and saying, what about us? If there is any way that we can work them in financially, once we get the bids back and everything, I just want the world to know it, it's my intent. Only two of the volunteer fire departments want the door opening because they're the only two that have people there twenty-four seven. But the other four, there are still features, Terrango, that they would like.
But the other four, there are still features, Terrango, that they would like as well. And so I'm going to be trying, if possible, to work these requests into the bond issue as well, I just want the world to know.
Do you have an estimate of the cost?
No, no, I do not.
Might be good to start to get that so Joe can keep watch on it.
Yeah, well, I think when we see what the, yeah, how much they charge Omaha for the station opening, that would give us a pretty good feel for, for what it would be.
And we're talking the alerting system, fire?
Uh, yes. Well, yeah, the paging, for the departments, yeah, the door opening and.
Fire station alerting.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry?
Fire station alerting.
Right, right.
Yes, for the six volunteer.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, everyone.